Good evening and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 12, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Leaks May, Martin.
Here.
Mayor Potomac Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here.
Here, Braylon.
There we go. Great, we have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Supported by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and we have three presentations this evening. The first one is our county commissioner, Commissioner Helene Zach, to tell us about all the great things happening in Oakland County.
Good evening, everybody. Coming soon is a new discount dental and prescription program that Oakland County offers. We are switching providers back to the National Association of Counties, and I will be bringing more information and materials. We will have a new family-type discounted dental plan. I believe the cost is $89 with a whole new network of dentists, and that will be coming to you soon. We discovered recently that our former dental plan had gone out of business, so I'm looking forward to that coming. I do want to remind people about getting flu shots. It's not too late. You can go to the county health department, which is at Greenfield and Catalpa, get a flu shot. If you don't have the money to pay, you can ask for a free shot. And as of January 18, and I don't have the February, there were 1,705 cases of the flu in Oakland County. That's our county, which is a lot. Reminder that we do have a newer human trafficking website running conjunction. If you can go onto www.oakgov.com, put in search, you'll find it. We do have a major problem of human trafficking in our county. You know, people say, you know, Oakland? Yeah, we do. And this is part of our response to help with it. There is a newer Road Commission for Oakland County app. You can download it for free, and what you can do is report potholes immediately through this app. And so it's under Road Commission for Oakland County. Another public health issue is hepatitis A outbreak, and so this is actually through the state Human Services Department. They are offering additional vaccination sites, and there will be a vaccination site at Soho Bar, which is at 205 West Nine Mile, Wednesday, February 28, from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. They're bringing the vaccinations to different communities, and that's the closest one near us. I also want to remind that those residents that meet low-income qualifications can delay their taxes until they receive their federal government check so that they can waive the interest on their local taxes through April 30. And if you want to do that, you need to notify the city Treasury Department that you are going to waive that interest so that you can get your check first. And that's about it for this evening.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions for Commissioner Zach?
Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Appreciate it. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Public Schools Strategic Planning and Update, and Dr. Bazey is here to -- our school superintendent in Ferndale Public Schools is here to present that. Doctor, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Coulter, members of the council and administration. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to take some time to update the city on some things related to Ferndale Public Schools. I want to introduce all the staff and school board who came. I appreciate the support in them coming. One of our board members, Nan Kerr Mueller, Jordan Smalley, Jim O'Donnell, Mike Davison back there, and then members of our HR team, Ashley Hart and Teresa Volcano, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Dina Rochelo, our Director of Communications and Pupil Accounting, Bill Good, we have Sarah Struzick, our Director of Special Education, we have Allison Mays, a high school science teacher, and Tom Mays, who's our Math and Science Coordinator. And the reason they're here really is because they want the community to know that all of us serve the students and the community, and we want to be visible within the community, and we want everyone to know that in our different capacities, we're here to support the community. So specifically, I'm here for two reasons, to discuss, one, an update on strategic planning and where the district is heading, hopefully, in the next five years; and then, second, to kind of, you know, in my short time here in eight months, is to kind of dispel some myths that we've seen come up with regards to Ferndale Public Schools, and we just kind of want to share great things about us in dispelling some of those myths. So a strategic plan is really a document that houses the mission, vision, goals of a district. It's really kind of the guiding light. It's a living, breathing document that the Board of Education and myself use to help us in district-level decision-making as we move forward. It's very important. You know, if you don't know where you're heading, you know, who knows where you're going to end up? So strategic planning is something that this board has made it a point that it's important work, and that's a big part of why we're here. So back in 2013, the district established a five-year goal, kind of their roadmap, and it included topics like sustainability and development, inclusion and respect, communication and trust, and community and collaboration. Basically, though, this couldn't have been done without the community. There was many stakeholders that were involved in this process so that all voices were heard when they developed a plan. As a result of all that hard work, they came to these kind of conclusions of what they felt should be included in the plan. One was reconfiguring the elementary and secondary buildings. Another one was increased outreach to promote our schools, having a comprehensive plan for achievement and behavior, increased equity within the district, and sustainability so that we're using our resources in the most efficient and effective ways. A lot of great things were accomplished. A couple of years ago, the district did reconfigure the elementary schools. It also merged the adult ed and alternative programming, which has had a lot of benefits. So, for example, in 2014, the district building-wise was at 50% capacity, and so with the reconfiguration and three buildings going offline, we're at now 80% capacity. So still some room to grow, but our spaces are being better utilized at this point. There's also been reconfiguration to administration to ensure that we're matched with the size of the district we are. Really neat, the board passed an energy bond where this past year, over 7,000 light fixtures were changed over within the district, all to LED. Those benefits are going to pay back the energy bond and make us sustainable for the future. Also, we're very lucky, the voters passed a sinking fund that allows us now the ability to properly maintain our buildings so that we're having longer use of life. So this summer, you're going to see a lot of great projects. You're going to see a cafeteria remodel at Ferndale High School. You're going to see some work being done to Ferndale Upper Elementary, as well as the Ferndale Early Childhood Center. A lot of great projects that will be taking place as a result of that sinking fund. So look to our website and Facebook. We'll update as, you know, as the construction goes along with those things. One other major piece of work that came out of the strategic planning was the branding, you know, of Ferndale Public Schools so that we know how great we are by getting that message out to the communities that we serve. There was a really great Learn Local campaign that Bill Good headed for us, and we've seen a lot of benefits as a result of that, more increased outreach to our resident districts, and it's really been great to see. From the achievement in academics and behavioral, the plan also called for some focus on the academics, right, and having collective efficacy among all of our buildings so that there is some commonality between school improvement plans and district improvement plans so that we are all kind of pushing in the same direction. There's also been systematic overhaul of MTSS K-12, where now we have ways that we're enriching students who are a little bit ahead and helping our students who are a little bit behind. There's been a solid approach to that. I guess the most exciting thing I think the district has done, really, Dina Rochelo has led this up, we're really at the forefront of social-emotional learning. We hear from the city, we hear from April, we hear from everyone that students are lacking the soft skills when they're entering in career or college post-secondary education. This year, we've been piloting Impact 30, which is 30 minutes that's integrated into the school day that deals with social-emotional learning. There's a curriculum tied to that, and really, this is, we understand that we're educating a whole child. I can tell you, you know, I'm a math teacher, and even as a math teacher, no one asked me, you know, what's the quadratic formula? Those things are important, but this is important as well. And we found the benefits of SEL curriculum to have increased achievement, improved attitudes, improved self-awareness among our students. So we are excited to continue that. It's actually been a model at the state level, and we'll continue to develop that curriculum and make it better. One other thing that is important, I think, not only to the city of Ferndale but to the school, is equity and ensuring that there is adequate access and participation among the diverse student body that we serve. One thing, now we have all students together, which is, again, has been a good transition. We also are considered an AP honor roll school because we've increased the number of students in AP classes. We have a district-established diversity committee that actually is going to be in March, holding one of its first community forums out in Royal Oak Township. We have a strong African-American parent network that does a lot of community-based events that are beneficial to all of our families. So as you can see, being a part of that process has made Ferndale better, and it's something that we want to continue. The work as a result of that 2013 plan has reaped a lot of benefits for our students and community. We're at the end now of the plan expiring at the end of this school year, and we're going to start with the new process to start with our next strategic plan. So that's where we need all of you. We need participation. We need your voice to be heard. And the board approved having Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB, kind of facilitate that process with us. So this is kind of the rough timeline of the events that will lead us. There's going to be stakeholder input sessions that obviously we'll put out there that will start taking place in February. We'll be collecting a lot of data in preparation and data analysis. There'll be a big planning retreat, and that's where we'll need big participation, where it's an all-day event. We'll feed you well, but that's where there's going to be a lot of work. That's where a lot of the things are formed, a lot of the plans. We're hoping by May that we'll have an approved plan that will take us out the next five years and kind of finish some of the things that we want to accomplish and some new goals for the future. So that's one part of the presentation. So I wanted to call up Dina Rochelo. She's been principal, an assistant superintendent, and a longstanding person in Ferndale. And before I go into the myths, I kind of want her to share a little bit of her story because, in essence, she represents a lot of what Ferndale stands for before I get into the myths.
I think she was saying I'm old. (laughter) In a very kind way. But no, hi, everyone. I'm Dina Rochelo. I've been in Ferndale since 2002. Prior to that, I worked for Oakland Schools as a school consultant, and I worked with all 28 districts within our Oakland County. So lots of great things that I've seen within our county. I do have two children. One, that's a graduate from Ferndale High School. I pulled her from another district when I started working here because what I saw and what I felt in each building is what was real, and that was just that high-quality instruction. The instructional practices that we have pre-K through 12 are beyond what we see in other districts. You can't compare. The other things that I think are so important are that we know that relationships matter. Dr. Bazey just talked about our social-emotional learning program. That starts with each teacher. It starts from the heart. Our children can tell you that when they come back to see us, when you're as old as me, and they come back and tell you all the great things they're doing. The number-one thing they say to me every time is that they were so prepared for college and career because of all of the wonderful experiences they've had here. So I have one child that has graduated from Ferndale High School, and now I have this beautiful little boy who's in kindergarten here, too. I chose to put him here because I can't compare our school culture, those quality instructional practices, what we rely on and what we see every day is so, so important, and I love working here, and I love being a parent here and being part of this community.
Awesome.
And that's why I haven't left. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
So that kind of captures, it's just something that I think needs to be shared. So getting into some of the myths that we want to kind of dispel in looking at. So I hear a lot of times, some of our neighboring districts, they're just better, and honestly, I feel like that kid in the upper-right-hand corner when I hear that. Exactly the same. You know, and it amazes me when people are so vocal to say that. You know, I also hear, well, you know, Ferndale academics are just not on par with other districts. Just look at their standardized test score. I understand SAT is important and the high stakes that's associated with that test, but I will tell you, and I will tell anybody, that our students are more than a test score that they take on one day throughout their K-12 experience. It's just, our students are more than a test score. Unfortunately, test scores sometimes are indicative of the socioeconomic status of a student and not necessarily their ability. Tests are biased. I remember when I took ACT, there was a question on habidasheries. And I'm sorry, I grew up in Wayne. I don't know, I didn't know what that was, and it was a store that sells hats, apparently. Again, that's a biased question for students who are living in, you know, in homes where they're first generation to go to college. So, again, we've also shown that students who stay longer in a district, the better they'll score. So if a student stays with, you know, at a particular district, K-12, most likely they'll do better than if they go to another district and they attend 512, okay? That has an impact on how students do on standardized test score. You know, Berkeley and Royal Oak, they have transency rates of about 3%, whereas Ferndale has about 10% to 15%. And that could be life situations, that could be school of choice, it could be a whole host of reasons. But, you know, we'll show you data that shows the longer you stay with us, the better you'll do. So, again, this is not to say my neighbors in Royal Oak, they're great, and the kids in Berkeley and the staff in Berkeley are great, but you know what? Ferndale is great as well. And so we understand that going to Ferndale has its benefits. If you look at our graduating class of kids, we have kids who go to Ann Arbor and Michigan State and all great schools, similarly to our neighboring districts. And I would even contend on a college app that going to a diverse school district is actually a benefit than going to a school district that isn't diverse. So there's great qualities in terms of our fine arts program, our theater program that really sets us apart that could be beneficial to your child when they're moving on. So, again, this is something that we looked at, that we looked at the data and looked at if students stay at Ferndale for nine years or longer. So if we look at all the kids who took SAT but were in the district nine years or longer, they actually outperformed state, national, and our neighboring school districts. So, again, the longer you stay with us, the better you're going to do. So if you look, the average for students who stayed in Ferndale Public Schools is over 1,100, which is on par with any other district, so. Again, there's a myth that Ferndale Public Schools is all school of choice, and we value our school of choice families. We really do because they're our students, and so we embrace them if they decide that that's where they want to get their education from, but there is this misconception that it's all school of choice. So to people who say that, I ask you, if I walk into our elementary school and I walk into a third-grade classroom or a second-grade classroom, you tell me, who's a school of choice student in that picture? I don't know, and it doesn't matter. Those are our students the second they walk through that door, and they're part of the Ferndale family. So this scatter plot is to give you an idea of students within the district. New students that we get, 87% of them reside within one of the four communities that we serve. They live in Ferndale, they live in Oak Park, they live in Pleasant Ridge, they live in Royal Oak Township, 87% of them. If you look at that scatter plot, the line outlining in red are residents of the cities or township that we serve but are not considered resident districts. They're still considered school of choice. So if you look at Ferndale K-12, if you eliminate University High School and TCEC, our rate is about 24%. You see Hazel Park's at 42, Claussen's at 33, Lamphier's at 27, Berkeley and Royal Oak are right around 21%. So, again, the fact that when they say that they're from, these are students that because 100 years ago, the way they district aligned, that students in Ferndale who live in the city of Ferndale are considered Hazel Park students, they elect to go to Ferndale because they live in Ferndale. So 87, almost 90% of our kids live within our resident communities. They live in the same cities or township that our non-school-of-choice students live in. So the myth that they're, you know, they're coming from Venus is just, again, it's just not accurate. We'd take them from Venus, though, anyways, so if, you know, if they meet the requirements.
Right.
So, again, there's always the issue that they say Ferndale has a lot of discipline issues. I really can't speak to that except for to say, come on, and we'll give you a tour. You're welcome in our buildings anytime, when there's students, when there's not students. I don't see it. We've been on tours, myself and Bill, where people walk around the high school and say, this is not what I was expecting. So there's just misconceptions that we'd like to clear up. So we invite anyone, send them our way, and we would be glad to take them on a tour. So that's the end of the myths. So just in leaving with you guys, I just want to establish that, you know, in 2013, they built a wonderful blueprint, something that was followed with fidelity, and they got to the point where they've built the frame, they built the foundation, we're ready to go, and we're looking now, from 2018 to 2023, to kind of put those finishing touches on the home so that in 2023, we kind of have this beautiful thing that's complete, and we look forward to everyone's participation. Thank you for the time tonight. If you guys have any questions about the presentation or anything, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bazey.
Can I make through the chair just a comment?
Any questions, yeah.
I love your embracing of technology, especially your snow day videos. I don't have kids in the district, and I get them. I don't have kids at all, but I still get them. It's really great.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here, and especially all the staff and board members that came. It's so great to see all of you guys. We talk about this a lot up here, but getting the various components of this city sort of rowing in the same direction has sometimes been a challenge, but it just feels like, whether it's our Housing Commission or the library folks, I see our library director is here or somewhere, it just feels like we've got momentum in the same direction, which is not a given, and so really appreciate seeing you all here. Great to see you, and thanks for the presentation, and we'll get involved in your planning however you would like us to, so please feel free to invite us. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Bazey.
Excellent. All right. Our third presentation this evening is the Water Residential Assistance Program, also sometimes known as RAP, right? And Joe, you're going to kick that off or introduce the good folks from OSA?
I would just like to introduce the folks from OSA. We will be bringing back an updated agreement with OSA on the next council agenda, and I just invited them here to just talk about our participation in the program, and they can talk a little bit about our community's participation over the last year as we began our participation in 2015.
Well, thank you for being here. We do get occasionally questions about this program, and I, for one, am not as knowledgeable as I probably should be, so glad to see you here. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us on the agenda this evening, and again, thank the mayor, council, the designer of our body, and the residents in the community for Ferndale. Again, so Ferndale actually was one of the earlier communities to sign on to the RAP program, which is the Water Residential Assistance Program. The RAP program came out of the bankruptcy with the city of Detroit and the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. The Great Lakes Water Authority became the authority as the vendor for water and wastewater services to the communities of which DWSD previously had, which is approximately 103 communities within the southeastern Michigan area. And of the 103 communities that are eligible to participate in RAP, 10 of the communities have either opted out or their community's ordinances would not allow for them to change ordinances for certain aspects of the MOA. For instance, communities have ordinance where they have to roll over their water bills onto the tax rolls each year. So some communities would not want to opt-in for those reasons. But of the 93 communities that are eligible for RAP, we have 70 communities that have opted in to the RAP program, and of course, Ferndale, again, being one of the first early communities to opt-in. And so just an overview of RAP. RAP is, again, the Water Residential Assistance Program. It assists low-income community members with their water bills, up to $1,000 a year on their water bills, and for homeowners, it'll assist them if they have higher-than-normal water usage with minor repairs, leak repairs, toilet replacements, aerators, faucets replaced, those sorts of things. So if a community member qualifies for RAP, and RAP is an income-eligible program, they will receive, again, $25 per month towards their water bill in a credit, and then if they have arrears, they're able to receive up to $700 towards assisting them with their arrears. And that's at $350 at the first six months. They continue to be successful, they can receive an additional credit of an additional $350 at the 12-month mark, up to $700. And so households that are eligible and are successful in the RAP program can enroll for a second year for, again, up to the additional $1,000 towards assistance towards their water bill. And so we have, with Ferndale, we have started off kind of slow, but that's only in that we, I believe, through OSA and the Great Lakes Water Authority, we need to actually put this out there to the community so that individuals are aware that this program does exist in Ferndale. And I think we're going to start to roll that out here in the next couple of weeks. And I think we're, we're going to start to, to roll that out here in the next couple of weeks, contacting, for instance, the, the, the schools, as well as the libraries, and some of the other agencies that are within Ferndale, so that we can get the word out that this program does exist here in, in Ferndale, and that there are a number of, of households that would qualify for this program.
And Kara is our communications person, raise your hand, Kara. She would also be a very helpful person for you to know, because we'd love to help spread the word as well.
All right. Excellent. Excellent. In addition to the assistance from the RAP program, households that would qualify for the RAP program would, in most cases, also qualify for assistance with their utility bills. And that is their, their gas and electric. And with OSA, OSA has a cap where they're able to assist individuals up to $3,000 towards their gas and utility bills. And you couple that with your $1,000 through the RAP program, and that, that definitely helps a number of our households with their utilities and with, with water assistance at this time. And so I, I can take any questions that, that you may have.
Well, the first question, just to get it out there, is if someone is interested in this service, how, who do they call?
Yes.
How do they call you?
If an individual is interested, they would call the Call Connect Center, which is, that number is 313-386-9727. And is that, that's the RAP line. Or they can, they can contact, they can contact through Wayne Metro, as well as OSA, through our websites. And the website for Wayne Metro is www.wainemetro.org. And I say that in that Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency. We are the community action agency in Wayne County. Our partnering community action agency, OSA, handles the intakes and the enrollments for Oakland County and Livingston and Washington. Okay, yes. Right. And so they can contact OSA through the website, or, or Wayne Metro through the website. But they can definitely call the RAP number to schedule an appointment. An appointment would be made right then on the spot, and then scheduled according to OSA's schedule for their intake professionals that would assist individuals with enrolling in the RAP program.
Thank you. So questions?
Through the chair?
Who?
Oh, hello.
I was wondering, may I first?
I was just wondering, have, have any residents even utilized this program? I know you have a marketing plan to kind of roll out, but...
Right. Yes. At, at, today, we have had, 22 individuals have enrolled in the program and have been successful. And of the 22 that have enrolled, 14 have been able to receive the additional assistance in that they have had higher-than-normal water usage. So not only were they able to receive the assistance up to $1,000, but they were also able to receive the assistance up to $1,000 in minor repairs to their home to get their water bills lowered as a result of making the, the changes and fixes.
Councilman?
You mentioned that it's income-eligible. Can you share what the thresholds are?
Yes, indeed. The thresholds for a household of one, the income is $17,805. For a family of four, the income level is $36,450. And I have some flyers that, that I'll pass out as well to, to the council and to the mayor. And we will have them available as well. As I indicated, I'll be in, will be in communications person to get these flyers out into the community.
Other questions?
How do you, you mentioned you also offer utility services or assistance. How do you coordinate with the other nonprofits with similar missions? Or do you, like THA, for example? It seems like there's overlapping of your missions.
Well, with, with THA, and, and we have partnered with THA on occasion. With THA, they do assist individuals with, with their utilities. And the funding for THA and assisting individuals with utilities, in many cases, is different from the funding that is associated with MEET, which is the Michigan Energy Assistance Program dollars. So when I say we have partnered with THA, you may have, for instance, a household, and their utility bill is $5,000. With OSA, they may be able to assist them with the $3,000, and then partner with THA for that remaining balance of $2,000.
So there's no prohibition from going to both organizations?
At, on occasion, it, it can be. But if, if THA is using their funding from a different source, THA also receives funding from the Michigan Energy Assistance Program dollars. And so if they are using funding from another source, then we can partner with them to be able to assist that person to maximize.
That makes sense, because I think something like 60% of their funding is coming from the utility companies.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
And I also just want to mention that at OSA, we have an annual Walk for Warmth, which we just had, the one for Oakland on February the 3rd. And our next one for Livingston County is on February 24th. So that, that brings us additional funding, so that if they do come and use MEET funding, and then they do need extra money, then we can pull from the other source that we have at our agency as well. And I would just like to introduce myself. My name is Barbara Jackson, and I am the program manager for RAP at OSA. So I am the one that if, when, when a client enrolls into the, into the program, if they have any questions or concerns about the program, or if anybody of you have any questions or concerns, then you can call me, and I will address that. Because since we are the, we are the agency that administers the RAP, so we do have a point person, which that is me.
Barbara, do you ever do onsite recruitment, for example, office hours at the library, where people can come in person and apply?
Actually, yes, we do. We have mobile sites as well that our coordinators go out to each week. And right now, we used to be in the, right down the street at the Accounting Aids Society building up there. But now we are no longer there. We are, we are actually moving to Madison Heights. I don't know if any of you know where the WIC location is in Madison Heights, across from the DHHS office. So we are moving into that building, which we should be moving in there a couple of weeks, so that we can bring, you know, more of a, more of a closer location to the Ferndale. But for right now, we have been going to the Hazel Park Library to assist the clients there.
Our library is way better.
Well, maybe we should have came down here and asked, you know, if we could come here.
Our library director's right here.
It's the library director. Okay, all right. I'll talk to you. So, so absolutely, we do come to different sites and locations to make it more convenient for our clients to come to. And we, we are spreading the word and trying to get it out. And, and like I said, go to all of our other different sites. We have a, a site in Oxford on Monday, at the, at the Village of Oxford on Tuesday. We're at the Novi Library. And on Thursdays, we go to Ypsilanti. And, and on Fridays, we have another location in Pontiac. And then as well, we, our main location is in Pontiac as well. So if anybody, you know, if we can ever go into a site that's convenient, any libraries, so Ferndale Library?
We would love that, yeah. Especially, you know, we used to have built your office here, and I know that, you know, there's consolidation and stuff. But we miss you being here, and we would love to get you back in some sort of physical presence, if possible.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for being here. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Great information. Appreciate it.
And as Barbara had indicated, of course, I didn't mention my name.
Oh. I'm sorry, I should have asked you, yeah.
I'm Jerome Drain. Yes, Drain, water, drain. That is actually my last name. And I am the director of Community Engagement for Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency. And so we service the 43 communities in Wayne County.
Excellent. But thank you both for being here. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And, and I am not only the program manager for RAP, I am also the deputy director for the Welcome Center Services at OSA. Thank you so much for having us.
Yep. Great. Great to have you here. Thank you. All right. So that concludes our presentations this evening. We had learned a lot of great information this evening. So those were three really good presentations. The next item of business, though, would be to call the audience. So this is your opportunity, if you're with us here in the audience in person, and you'd like to address council on any issue that you'd like. It's not on the agenda, because we'd let you speak to that when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you'd like to come up and address council on any issue that you'd like, for three minutes, you have the opportunity to do so now. Just kind of come on up to the mic, give us your name and your address, and tell us what's on your mind. And if you have posters, even better.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess, and I'm here tonight representing the Ferndale Community Concert Band. And in answer to your question, there is an upcoming concert on February 21st, 25th, I'm sorry, Sunday, February 25th, Sunday at 3 o'clock in the Ferndale High School Auditorium. As always, they're free. There will be a bake sale immediately following, and that generates quite a bit of revenue for us after each concert. What's really unique about this concert, our almost 90-member adult ensemble will be breaking down during the concert and create smaller ensembles around the auditorium. So it's really quite unique. My husband has been in the process of building a box that's called the Mailer Box. And we're using it for one-note only. It's 36 inches tall, 32 inches square. And a wooden mallet will make this most thunderous sound. So the music that we're playing is very unique. Hasn't been done before, certainly not by us. So we encourage you all to come, and I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
The date? I don't think you gave the time.
3 o'clock in the afternoon.
3 o'clock?
Yep. It usually lasts about an hour and a half. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Sharon. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to address council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tom Trozey. I live at 346 West Breckenridge.
Give me the first name again?
Tom.
Tom, okay.
Tom, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. I live at a residence that doesn't offer surface lock parking. And when the emergency snow ban went into effect, the only place I can park is on the street. So because of that, I received a ticket. So my question is, where can I move my vehicle so that doesn't happen?
Yep. And Joe, can I put you on the spot? Or do you not know that off the top of your head? I know you helped craft those sites. Or is there someone else more, or maybe is that a DPW question?
Could be, depending on, we could all deal with it. Though there's snow emergency lots that are dedicated within the downtown that are offered for residents during a snow emergency temporarily. So when an emergency is called, the West Breckenridge Lot is made available for residents to park their car in. We're not enforcing it during the duration of the snow emergency. The East Breckenridge Lot is also made available, as well as all municipal parks. So any municipal park, parking lot located at a municipal park.
So Tom, what street did you say you were on, again? I'm sorry.
I live on West Breckenridge.
On West Breckenridge. So the Breckenridge Lot is...
The Breckenridge Lot is, is made as a temporary snow emergency parking lot. You can find that information on the city's website as well. There's a, there's a parking map lot. There's also a snow emergency permit program that certain properties, as defined by ordinance language, are eligible for to obtain temporary snow emergency permits. But that is administered through the police department. The police department can go to your property and tell you whether you meet the eligibility requirements according to the ordinance.
Okay.
Not if, not if your property meets the eligibility requirements of a driveway.
So you could tonight, connect with Joe and just give him your contact information, and he could find that out for you.
My other question is, do you have any type of notification for, like, text messages with bad weather alerts? Or anything like that? Because they said that they mentioned on the news about the emergency. All I got was Royal Oak news, not from Ferndale.
It is typically on the news. It's also very actively spread on things like our, you know, social media Facebook page. I don't know if you follow the city of Ferndale on Facebook. Always a good idea. Kara is going to address that question. This is our communications person. It's a great question.
Yes, we had a, a great text alert service through our website before we switched to the new website. And we are in the process right now of having them set that back up for us. So it kind of is on temporary hold, and we're taking information as people are sending it in, so that we can go ahead and sign up everybody who was signed up before, as well as anybody who's been interested in the interim. But it should be implemented again shortly.
So that was unfortunate. Although just know, I believe our ordinance is four inches and above. Am I correct about that? So you should just know in general, whether you get a communication or not, that if it's four inches or above, that's generally cause for... Now, you wouldn't know the exact hours and time, so you'd probably then have to, you know, reach out to us in some way.
I'm also, I'm also new to this area. I just moved here from out of state, so.
Oh, welcome. Where did you move from?
Um, Ohio.
Okay. From the Midwest, but still. Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
So may I ask, the, the West Breckenridge Lot, that's the lot behind Tree Dreams and all of...
It is right on the corner of Woodward and West Breckenridge.
Okay.
So there's no corner of Woodward and West Breckenridge?
So you have to kind of come around and go to the park.
Yeah, that's right, yes.
If West Breckenridge went through...
I'll pull it up here for the audience.
All right. Anyone else like to address council this evening? As Joe looks for the lot. Anyone else?
And you can also subscribe for alerts on parkferndale.com. The gentleman in... If you go to parkferndale.com, which is the city's parking website, you can subscribe for the alerts I think you're looking for, where we do issue text alerts. Where you put in your information, then just subscribe to the category that you'd like to receive alerts from. The parking director, Kevin Cairns, is right back there.
You should get a new resident pass. Tell Judge Longo that the mayor said, "Give you a break." I don't know if that'll get you anywhere, but... Probably not. All right. Is there anyone else? I guess I've asked that twice now. Finally, anyone else that would like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on now. We have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first one is a public hearing on 531 Vester Street, the conditional rezoning, which we've talked about before, but now is the actual public hearing. And so Jordan, do you want to introduce?
I'm waiting.
I'm sorry. Did we boot you, Joe?
Yes. So with this rezoning, we're to rebuild, build something special? But, no, I could pull up a map if necessary. But basically, council, thank you. This, this is something special, actually. At 531 Vester, Search Optics, who is across the street from this, at 1938 Burdette, owns this building. And you may recall that they're bringing their concept, as they call Incubizo, a co-working office building, 8,000 square feet, two stories to this, to this existing office building. Essentially, what is before you tonight, this conditional rezoning concerns a 600-square-foot addition. They would like to put essentially what you might call, depending on your perspective, the front of the building, sort of a long vester. The original plan for this building was on the first floor to have sort of a common space and some of the other co-working amenities, desks available for rent, et cetera. This end of the building was essentially their common kitchen. This was a kitchen area, a break room, if you will, that all of the tenants of the space could share. What they would like to do is, instead of, they were going to have an outdoor space in this area, sort of an open patio, sort of a passive space. And what they realized is if they were to cover it, one, it sort of buffers that use a little better. But two, it creates additional space for programming and events. A lot of the furnishings they're looking at for the building involve flexible use. So you could be nine to five, having a bunch of businesses in there, and, you know, seven o'clock, or six o'clock, sort of the happy hour-type time, you could have sort of that right-after-work event, sort of like a programming. And one of the things, if you recall, we're partnering to put the chamber in there, is free office space. So one of the things that we're going to do is have, so if the chamber has, you know, some sort of like business educational event, something where you can kind of have a small seminar, this will allow that to be a lot more flexible. And what you'll get here is a conditional rezoning. So it'll be about as closely tied to this use as you can get within ordinance. So essentially, what that means practically is it's a C-2 allowance with exceptions. So there are several, and I won't, I won't go through each one of them unless you'd like me to, but it's in your packet that says essentially, if this use were to disappear, it would have to be another use that's within the C-2 district, with the exception of several named uses, such as vape shops, et cetera, and, and things that would require a liquor license. So it's a very restricted, specifically to allow Incubizo to do this. And then if the Incubizo use were to disappear for more than a year, it would revert to its original zoning.
So with that introduction, this is a public hearing, actually. So I will open it up... So I will open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council on the conditional rezoning at 531 Vester Street.
You just want to quickly acknowledge, we do have some folks from Search Optics here if people have specific questions for them as well.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Collins, 634 East Breckenridge. While I'm not necessarily opposed to the rezoning, I guess I have questions now about the use of the property. So if it's going to be used in the evening and during the daytime, again, we have an issue of parking, because that building does not have its own parking. So if you're going to use it for events, is there a clear designation of agreements of where they're going to park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And traffic flow is going to be another problem that we're kind of interested in in our neighborhood.
Got you. Okay. So, Jordan, do you want to address that question? Yeah, thank you.
So those are great questions. The good news about this property being close to Search Optics and sort of within their orbit is it'll take advantage of the parking lot that they have sort of wrapping around their building on Burdette. So there's ample parking there to accommodate their uses during the day, and anything that we're going to have programming-wise afterward would all park in that lot.
Well, I guess, again, it goes back to the issue of, we have train issues and everything else. And when they filter out, they do not go straight onto nine mile. They filter out through our neighborhoods on Breckenridge, et cetera, et cetera, and the traffic flow is not made for them. We have a dead-end corner street. There's just a yield sign, you know, and it really doesn't do much. So I didn't know if there was something we could do as far as, you know, maybe changing the traffic flow, maybe certain streets maybe one-way temporarily or some during the day. I don't know. But it is kind of an issue. And then the other thing I have is, what's going to happen with the three properties? If this is zoned conditionally for that building on Vester, what happens to the three vacant properties where there has been no usage for yet? So, I mean, if they're going to build something there, does that fall under the C-2, or, you know, designation, or how that works?
Are you referring, just, sorry, are you referring for clarity's sake, the properties that sort of wrap around their building on Burdette and Vester?
No, the three properties on Vester that have been torn down...
Oh, correct. That used to be single-family houses.
Correct.
Yes. And that's actually foreshadowing, that's the next public hearing. There's an item related to the items surrounding Search Optics. But essentially, we can look into traffic flow alternatives. The short answer is, right now, there's not much different than you can do. What I can say, which is hopefully at least somewhat reassuring, is that these aren't exactly, you know, these aren't like weddings at Rust Belt. These aren't like 100-plus people. This is, you know, maybe 20. And essentially, what we could look at as they flesh out a vision for that surrounding property, there might be alternatives. There is no real direct nine-mile access now, but we're confident with the layout that they have, that this isn't going to be a burden to the neighborhood. I mean, we can look at traffic control items. I don't have a perfect, clear-cut answer for you right now.
No, I understand. And I guess, my concern is, those vacant properties where there's no existing use for a Seattle building or anything, and that becomes another office building, then you're jam-packed with a whole bunch of people in this area where there's not a lot of parking spots. I mean, they have, you know, maybe 100 spots.
They will have to, like, anything that they propose for that area, essentially, you can't sort of double and triple-dip on your parking capacity. So that lot will sort of determine, you know, what they're able to do in total. So if everything's feeding from that lot, at a certain point, you won't be able to accommodate any more uses. So the parking ordinance and the C-2 ordinance itself kind of regulates that by kind of limiting how much you can put in there based on the parking capacity you have. So it's a good question, it's a good point. I think they'll be sort of regulated by the size of their lot.
I'm just, because they're already double-dipping already. I mean, if you're looking at the overflow from Voyager, and then you have this new space, which is going to be used during the day and the evening, Search Optics is still using their lot during the day. So in a sense, you are already kind of double-dipping a little bit.
Right. That's a fair point. I mean, at the end of the day, you've got uses that occur sort of the nine to five, and then there will be those in the evening. And one of the things that we do when we're looking at the site plans is, we make sure that that all comes out in the wash, that even if there is some overlap, it doesn't exceed the capacity of that lot and create an undue burden on the neighborhood.
So then the C-2 zoning, conditional zoning, is based on that one building?
That's correct. Because it's specifically for this building, for this parcel.
But that whole area is still going to be zoned C-2?
Well, there are...
The whole project area is going to be zoned C-2?
Contingent on the next item on the agenda getting approved? Yes.
Okay. So then if something happens to the one building on Vester, does that whole section revert back to mixed use?
No. No, this conditional would be just for this parcel. So it's really, it's basically granting exception for this building to have a covered addition rather than just a patio.
So then, the new building, the Vester building, conditionally is C-2, but all the rest of the properties are going to permanently be C-2?
Correct. If that item gets passed on the next item on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Anyone else from the public that has questions or would like to address council on this conditional rezoning? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion, and I will open it up to questions or comments from, well, questions or a motion from council.
Just one quick question. You said 8,000 square feet of office space is what they're doing there? Are they building that on spec, or do they have clients?
So they're, great question.
This is me exercising knowledge I have now.
Somewhat relevant. So essentially, it's on spec. They're confident that essentially, this is, if you're familiar with the WeWork concept or Bamboo Detroit, this is essentially, you have one tenant incubizo in the building, and it's on them to sort of find subleases. So they're confident that they have enough demand that they can get the folks that are lawyers, real estate agents, or maybe even small one-to-two, one-to-three-person businesses, or chamber-sized businesses, a staff of three or a few, that will use this space. So they're building it frankly on spec.
Thanks. You're just showing off.
A little bit, yeah.
Public doesn't understand.
I know.
We've kind of finally figured out what on spec meant in our previous meetings, so...
Well, let me pass this thing. I move in the matter of 531 Vester Street, Sinwell number 2527487015. The city approved the conditional rezoning from R3, single multifamily, to C-2, general commercial, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions, after public hearing was held and set and published for this date and place as listed below.
Support.
So moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Now, any comments?
Just one comment I want to mention. The planning commission unanimously supported this.
I saw that in the notes, so that's helpful. Other comments or questions?
I just wanted to recall from talking to Search Optics a while back, that when the resident came up to talk about parking, that their back lot that was for Search Optics was still being empty at night, and that there was talking about using that for Voyager overflow. I didn't know if there was anything put in place to sort of publicize that lot as possible overflow, but people weren't blocking or something. I recall this. Do you remember this conversation? You guys remember this conversation?
I do recall it. That might be something that Josh, I don't know if you can speak to that from the perspective of the company.
If you could repeat your question for me, sorry.
When you guys were here last, we talked about your Search Optics lot, the sort of arrow-looking lot that's next to the train tracks? And that the resident brought up the issue that the Voyager overflow parking was happening in the side streets and not perhaps going into Search Optics lot down there? And so I was wondering if there had been anything communicated to the restaurant to help guide people to that spot to park, to address some of these issues.
Well, I think that as we see both of the buildings become occupied, you know, because we're talking about the 531, and so then Voyager becomes part of it, because we talk about it in a campus in general, we're going to end up needing to do better wayfinding for the parking lot. So the answer will be, yes, the parking will be identified better. The side street that it's on now, where most of the parking ends up, is actually, no longer has any houses on it. They've all been removed. So the overflow parking right now, I mean, if you were, so they're closed today, but if you were to go to Voyager in the evening, you would see that most of the parking ends up, so south of the Search Optics building, but also on Vester Street, along where the Voyager parking lot empties out onto, and in the Voyager parking lot. So the side street that they're emptying out onto now is actually, is no longer residential. It's already, you know, it was previously meant to be zoned C-2, which it is now that all the houses are gone.
All right. So when, I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. When do you think wayfinding will be added?
It's going to end up being a, like, in the initial phases of the project that we're doing now. So when we activate 531, it will be, wayfinding will end up being part of that. So it would be this year, when this project happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We had a, you made the motion, right?
I made the motion. Someone support?
I supported it.
Yeah, that's right. Piana and Martin, final questions or comments? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Lieutenant Pollocka.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our second public hearing, as Jordan mentioned, is related to the first, and that is a public hearing on the Vester-Burdette Street rezoning per the zoning map amendment. So, Jordan, do you want to introduce that?
Yes. Counsel, yes. For those in the audience that were dutifully paying attention to the last item, this is the second piece of the conversation surrounding the Search Optics campus. And so essentially, what the request before you is, is to essentially bring the parcels within that campus all under the same zoning classification. Essentially, what you're talking about, I'm sorry, excuse me, got a little tongue-tied. What you're talking about are three parcels within sort of the triangle, if you will, that sort of runs Burdette, the railroad tracks down to Vester. So, and if you, Josh had mentioned those, that former residential area that has been sort of demolished and incorporated into the overall campus is already C-2. These parcels will simply be brought into the same alignment.
Great. And with that, I will open up the public hearing portion of this and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on this request this evening. Joe, you want to?
Absolutely.
Sure, come on up. Give us your name and...
My name's Jamie Hernandez. I live at 520 East Breckenridge. I bought my house in 1995, and I'm a Ferndale graduate also.
Awesome.
But anyways, back to the same thing. As everybody knows, you know, the Voyagers usually come around our side with the cars and stuff, and I think I said that the last time or up there on the last, when they zoned the other ones. But that's a very concerning of our property values, too. And then when, if it's all turned zone to C-1, and then they move, then the railroad could come in and put their containers there and do it like they do on the west side, I mean, on the east side of Ferndale, in that area. Because they already, the one guy's already signed a promissory note for railroad, so once it gets to C-2, they're going to sell it to them. And that's what we're going to be left with all night, slam and slam and slam it, and then with the traffic also.
Well...
I mean, that's...
I don't give a lot of hard and fast, but as long as we're here, I can tell you that will never happen.
Never.
Your honor, if there's any...
But I hear what you're saying.
They can't expand the facility, actually.
West affair.
West affair.
Right. They're legally prohibited.
But, you know, you know how it is.
They can buy it. They can't expand it without changing the laws, and we're not going to agree to that. I can at least discount it.
I think we're changing laws now, too, aren't we?
We're changing the zoning, yes.
Just to speak to that, we do have a legally binding agreement with CN that they can't expand further west. And Dan, if you want to...
Facility, yeah, they can't, the intermodal facility, they cannot expand west affair.
So that's a binding agreement between the city and the railroad, that that can't occur. And one thing I do want to bring up on the parking, because it is a good question, obviously, any site plans that would come our way through the planning department, wayfinding and placemaking and traffic flow and pedestrian flow would be very important. One thing I do want to mention, that is an ordinance, an open ordinance process. If even in those efforts, the residents are still finding that parking is a challenge, there is an opportunity to petition and become a resident permit parking-only zone. So all those residential streets adjacent to that campus could petition. It's an open process and go through us and have it set up where residents only can park on those side streets. And so essentially, it would force any users that are not residents to park in the lot or spaces provided by Search Optics.
I think we'd be like parked in Ferndale for a long time, you know, right?
Yep.
I mean, we've been parked in Ferndale. We have all these festivals and stuff now that we're talking about, right? You know, all these festivals, all these people come in. If we're going to have a festival, then it would at least have able for them to park somewhere, you know, instead of on the residence, you know?
Yep.
You know what I mean?
I do.
And that's just fair, you know? And you should do it before you make the plan. That way, everybody knows, you know, instead of after the fact. That's like everything else, after the fact. But nonetheless...
Yep. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address council? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and now I'd open it up to council for your questions or a motion.
I'd move the city council approve the amendments to the zoning map to rezone the parcels listed below from M1 Limited Industrial to C-2, general commercial, as summarized below, with the following findings, after a public hearing was held, as set and published for this date and place. And the findings are listed in the packet.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, any discussion, comments, questions?
Just that the planning commission also unanimously approved this one.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize again that as we have, you know, growth happening in our community and private property is selling and new uses are being proposed, you know, I just wanted to say, we recognize, everybody on council and city staff recognize that these changes can be discerning. You know, you bought your house decades ago, but some of these properties are no longer attracting the type of investment there, and it's better to have, in my opinion, someone in the building than a vacant building. And so I just wanted to say and reiterate that we're always very concerned and conscientious about parking, and we have put programs in place like Jordan has mentioned. And so I just wanted to say that it's hard to manage this, but we're always on top of it, and we're always open to residents helping us make improvements where we need to. So I just wanted to say, thank you for coming tonight and, you know, voicing your concerns.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polika.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are, items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. So, let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting and workshop held on January 22, 2018, and the workshop held on January 29, 2018. Those minutes are in your packet. Item B is the adoption of a resolution approving travel for councilmembers Piana and Martin to go to the MML Capitol Conference in Lansing on March 20th through the 22nd of this year. Item C is the adoption of a resolution of support for the application submission for the city of Ferndale to the state of Michigan for a community for a lifetime designation and to authorize the city manager to sign any documentation required for said application. Item D is the adoption of a proclamation celebrating Emerald de Maire's 100th birthday. Item E, huh?
No.
Item E is the approval of concurrence with amendment to the Iron Ridge Brownfield Plan, as submitted by our CED director. Item F is the approval of the proposed smart third-party agreement. Item G is the approval of filling the finance manager position, subject to civil service approval of the job description and pay range. Item H is the approval of floor-for-life proposals in the total amount of $10,618.45 to remove and replace the existing tile flooring in the Kulik Center's kitchen and Dale's room, with the total expense to be charged to the general fund, facilities, maintenance account, as noted. And finally, item I is the approval of the bills and payroll as presented by the city manager's office and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right. Moved by Leaks May, supported by Martin. Now, any comments or discussion?
I would like to discuss or read the resolution for the communities of a lifetime, if I may.
Excellent, yes.
So, maybe late last year, there was a meeting at the Kulik Center regarding what we could, how we could turn this, how we could get the city of Ferndale designated as a community of a lifetime. And what that is, is an all-inclusive community for all ages and people to work, play, stay, and live and grow here. So I'd like to read this resolution. I'm working on this resolution with two other community members, one being Kathleen Latache, Diversity and Consulting, and the other being Jeannie Davis, Senior Extraordinaire, very involved community member. So I'd like to read the resolution. So, at a regular meeting of the city council, city of Ferndale, open county, Michigan, held in the council chambers at 300 East Nine Mile, on the 12th day of February 2018, the following resolution may be moved and supported. The Michigan Commission on Services to the Aging Development and Recognition Program in 2007, from input from the State Advisory Council on Aging as part of a state and national trend to improve communities for an aging population. And the purpose of completing a community assessment is to evaluate, identify, and build on attributes for all ages within areas such as walkability, transportation, commerce, enrichment, housing, inclusion, and safety. This process will assist with future planning and promotion, identifying areas of strength to build upon and areas that can be enhanced and corrected. Therefore, the city of Ferndale does hereby proclaim support for the application submission to the city of Ferndale, to the state of Michigan, for the, for a community of a lifetime designation, and to authorize the city manager to sign any documentation required for said application. And what this will do is, well, what we hope this will do, first of all, the process is that we're completing an assessment tool to find out, and we're allowing community input to find out what we can do to make this community more inclusive. And we've, we're getting help from our community members, we're getting help from the city staff, some of you who's, who's filled out the assessment tool for us, that section. And what we hope in the future, not only will we be designated as a community of a lifetime, which is a great designation, but we hope that maybe in the future that it will allow us for some grants to apply for, things that we can, that can help us assist and improve our communities even further, so.
Nice.
I'm looking forward to it. We're almost through the, the assessment tool, and more to follow.
Excellent. Thank you for bringing that forward. I would like to just read the proclamation honoring Emerald de Maire's, because it's pretty cool. I don't know how many residents we have that have reached their 100th birthday, but she did. And so I just want to read that part of this proclamation, and it says that Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's congratulations to Emerald de Maire's on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Emerald was born February 23, 1918, in Jackson, Michigan. She married Salem de Maire's on September 10, 1939, and they moved to Detroit shortly after the war. They were never blessed with children, but considered their many nieces and nephews as their own, and dearly loved their miniature poodle dogs. They purchased their home on Pearson Street, get this, on October 10, 1950, where Emerald still resides to this day. And I understand there's going to be a birthday party in her honor at the Kulik Center this Saturday. So, Emerald de Maire's is a credit to our community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate this achievement. So, just wanted to recognize and honor Emerald on her 100th birthday. That's great, yeah. Any other comments or thoughts on the consent agenda? Matt, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polika.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, there's just one item this evening, and that is the consideration to purchase a tandem axle dump truck. And introduce the dump truck.
Counsel Nick Kalinsky from DPW. Again, just a replacement dump truck, really. We have a 25-year-old currently dump truck, which is rated a poor condition, a lot of rust throughout the body and cab, it's not drivable, hard time getting replacement parts because of the age of the vehicle, trying to get a replacement thing, multifunctional, so dumps, salt, plow, it works year-round to make sure that it's not just a, you know, six-week wonder, but, you know, use throughout the year. And I would trade the old one in for, for market value.
Excellent, all right. Questions?
Yes. So, we're replacing a 25-year-old Ford, which generally would only last about 10 years, with a Daimler?
Are you abstaining from this vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
I probably should. No, I, no, I'm...
We can buy it.
I'm joking.
What's the lifespan of this truck? So, 25 years ago, the lifespan was 10 years.
Probably 25 years. Frank, so, vehicle replacement, approximately 10 years for these type of vehicles is what...
In 25 years, the trucks haven't gotten any better, that they still only have a 10-year lifespan?
Yes. And because of the usage, especially with the salt on the roads, it kind of helps.
How many miles is that? Don't mean to put you on the spot, on that truck.
On that truck, it's about 35,000 miles right now.
Oh, those are tough miles.
Remember, those vehicles like that, they'll go by hours used, not miles.
Okay. Thank you. Hours are incredible.
It could be used, it could be used all day within 100 feet, you know, square foot.
That's very true. All right.
Don't laugh, you know I'm right.
Does Ford even make dump trucks anymore?
Do they still make dump trucks there?
Ford itself, I don't think so, but...
So, there you go.
The F-750 frame is available. Just depends on who's, who makes it.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, normally for our purchases like this, we've been putting in, if it's been included in the capital improvement planning process...
It has. It was capital number 33, it was actually submitted in FYE 17. The capital improvement plan is part of the packet, it's one of the later attachments.
Way in the back.
Yeah.
I had the same question earlier, they pointed me there.
Other questions?
We'll readjust the callbacks to ensure that it's...
Okay. It is, there it is.
Oh.
Other questions or a motion?
I'll move that we approve the purchase of a tandem axle dump truck with associated equipment from Wolverine Truck Group, fitted by Napfeed Truck Equipment, financed at 4.5% over five years with an annual payment of $54,199.52, totaling $270,997.60 after five years, and that the expense be charged to the general fund, Public Service Department Vehicle Purchase Finance to 101-4401-977500.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Another question, I have no idea if 4.5% is a good interest rate on these trucks, is it?
Probably have to rethink.
Yeah.
The financing as we go forward, if it will take a much higher...
Right. I think that's, that's part of the reason for the market volatility, right? That rising interest rate. So that is something to keep an eye on. Good point. All right, other questions or comments? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polika.
Yes.
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. That concludes our regular agenda. The next item of business would be call to council. Looking around, I see the police chief in the back of the room, anything for the good of the city, sir?
Police, tell them this evening, you're on.
All right. Parking, any parking issues that you want to address?
Nothing, sir.
All right. How about recreation? Lorena, anything for the recreation department this evening? Sure, she did.
Isn't there a dance coming up?
It's already happened.
Oh, it just happened.
Oh, it just happened.
Can't go to the daddy-daughter dance, Greg.
So, just an update on that, we had our daddy-daughter dance on Saturday, and despite the weather and the snow, we, it was a great success. We had over 190 people that, that pre-registered, and we had a waiting list of about 35 that we just couldn't take. And so it was a great event. We did surveys, NPS score was over, I believe, 90, and so we got a great response from that.
What does that mean, I'm sorry, NPS?
NPS is just like a rating score, so it's certain questions that you can ask, anything over a 1 is excellent. So, being at a 90 is like awesome, off the charts. So, certain questions like, would you refer a friend, would you come back next year, that, that scored on this national system.
Okay, thank you.
And then our sports program, registration is open for all of our sports, so it's not too late to register. So I want to encourage all the families and to go ahead and get it in, because we are selling out, or running out of space. And we have a lot more things to come, so I have more updates as we get through this winter season. Thank you.
Excellent. Dan, anything for the HR department this evening? All right. Kara, how about communications, community engagement?
I don't have anything this evening.
Wow, how about finance? Cheryl, anything for the finance department this evening? Yep, all right. Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department?
No, sir.
All right. Jordan, anything else from community and economic development?
Just pumped to announce that our own Rafino Valentine's celebrating a little over a million-dollar expansion in his facility on Wanda. They have a new distilling machine, affectionately named Sherbert, I think after his dog, but it's going to churn out some really great whiskey and be celebrating next month, and there'll be details to follow on that. So we're just really excited about the expansion of a Ferndale iconic business.
Amen, that's great. Great news, thank you. DPW, Lloyd, anything for the good of the community this evening?
I just wanted to mention...
It's been real quiet, hasn't it?
Absolutely. Well, I invited Carlos Kennedy here tonight, because I anticipate there may be some questions about snow removal and our response. But it appears that, you know, the main focus has been on a video, and I hear it's, it's in China now, and it's getting a number of hits.
Wait, was that DPW guys?
My compliments to Carlos and the crew for the weekend, for the job. And just so residents know, we are not done yet. We will be out there for several more days, if not another week to 10 days, hauling snow where there's sightline problems and doing cleanups when the parking isn't interfering with that. So, stick with us, and we will be responding.
Well, I mean, nothing goes perfectly, but it's been a great effort, and we really appreciate it. It's, it was an unusual three or four days.
I know that our city manager has correlated this, because we've talked about the expense. But interestingly enough, the most difficult storms for us to handle are long-duration storms. We have actually had, almost every storm we've had has been a long-duration storm. It makes sense, right? If you, would you rather plow four inches once or, you know, two inches twice, right? It puts that much wear, more wear in the car, the vehicle, I'm sorry, and also the, you know, the workers and additional salt and that sort of thing. So, the other thing is, is that our crew has not only been out on New Year's Eve, Christmas, Christmas Eve, you know, Christmas, I mean, New Year's Day, but also the Super Bowl. So, we're talking about, you know, some significant sacrifice they've been making.
It's a major sacrifice.
But they are, they're holding up well, and they responded very positively over the weekend.
And I'll promise you now, if the Lions are ever in the Super Bowl, they can stay home and watch it. I'm not worried about it. No, thank, all kidding aside, thank you, guys, great job, appreciate it.
Can you back up a comment with a snowplow, because I noticed it especially at my...
Yeah, you're going to have to jump up and so that we can hear you in the mic, Sharon.
Those wonderful little white sticks that are pointing out of the ground, I know near where I live, there's probably a half a dozen of them missing, if not more. Don't you find that to be hazard during a plow like on Saturday and Sunday?
They're not a hazard, because they are designed to be in the roadway, flexible, they break, they have a break-off point. We have had a number of them hit by trucks and, you know, other vehicles, especially at the corners. We are tracking those, we're in close contact with planning to determine what our best options will be. We have already made some adjustments for the future work on Laverne to extend the distance, so that would make it easier for maintenance, but also there's less out there, there's less to hit. And so we're monitoring the situation, tracking employee costs and time, but, you know, and we will make modifications in the future as we, as we need to.
Thank you. Joe, anything from assistant city manager's office this evening?
Just briefly, I'm sure the city manager will remind, the offices will be closed in honor of President's Day next Monday. Also, we will not be enforcing parking during President's Day. You'll see Kevin and his staff putting signs on pay stations reminding patrons that they don't have to pay for parking Monday morning prior to enforcement hours. So each of those pay stations will be signed as part of our SOPs. So, take a break and come on down, you don't have to pay for parking next Monday, and celebrate President's Day.
Thanks, sir.
That sounded like a...
Wow.
I'm celebrating Lincoln, I don't know all about you.
Marnie, anything for the clerk's office this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing. April, city manager's office.
No, I just want to, I know that we've, I'm sure you all give accolades to the weekend, but our team really worked very well together this weekend, everything from communications to the police department to DPW. All of them were in tandem at each moment, starting with the pre-meeting on Thursday in anticipation for the long-duration storm. And I think that they, just the, the way that the team worked the entire weekend together and ensuring that we all took our own parts of how to navigate, which was a pretty messy weekend, they did an awesome job. And with all, with everything, we learned a few more things as well to make the next time even better. So, just a huge kudos to the entire organization for really stepping up as a team together, which could have been a, a pretty, much more awful situation had we not been able to do that as a team. So, appreciate the rally, and again, thank you for the community who is also very patient with how we chose to address those storms on the, in particular, in the neighborhoods. So, again, thank you very much for that.
I think I'm going to create the snowplow award, just, just make it for the city, we give it to ourselves every year.
Well, but, you know, you know, you mentioned the team aspect of it, and it isn't just DPW, so I appreciate that. And in particular, the police have helped step in, and because enforcement is, is a part of that, and I know we had one gentleman here...
And we did have Republic Parking as well, I forgot to join in on that.
And Republic Parking, it's a key component, and I know nobody's happy if they get a ticket, but, but in order to make this process work the most effectively, there has to be some enforcement mechanism, and so it really was a team effort, so that's a great reminder.
Carlos, how many, I think you had, there was 36 hours straight of your team, somebody on the road for the most part, minus breaks, so, pretty significant, so, good job, you guys.
All right. Anything else? April?
No, no. Joe stole my thunder.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Two things, one, I just want to echo my gratitude to everybody, communications, police, fire, the DPW, you guys were awesome. And it's a job a lot of us couldn't do, to be honest with you, so I really appreciate your tenacity and all the work that you guys did. I thought the communication effort was well-coordinated, and the police were out helping out, and it was everybody involved and engaged, so I really appreciate it. Secondly, I just want to give some public recognition to Brian and Lori Kelly. They have operated a business on Woodward Avenue, Detroit Comics, for the last 10 and a half years, and they recently announced that they're closing within the next two or three weeks. So if you get a chance, stop in to see them and say goodbye, not only does that store kind of feed my inner 12-year-old child, the, they're huge supporters of the downtown and have really come out and been active in the downtown and been great, great assets to the community. So, I know a lot of people are going to miss them, so I just want to recognize them for their 10 and a half years of service, and if you can, stop by and send them off.
I'm really sad. I don't know where I'm going to get my Christmas gifts from my brother-in-law.
Yeah, no, I, I'm...
Serious, I replied on them, yeah.
Yeah, I have to...
They're closing up or relocating?
They're closing completely, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Nothing other than to echo thanks all around to all the efforts. I mean, I think you guys did a great job, and I know sometimes it might seem like a thankless job, but most of the community appreciates what you do, so thank you.
And I just wanted to say to, wait, is Lorena still here? When I saw the setup for that daddy-daughter dance, I thought it was just amazing, I was just, I wanted to be there. But, and the fact that you had so many people participate, and then a waiting list, I hope there's a way we can expand it in the next coming years, because it looks like it's going to be a popular event, so.
Oh, for sure. We just had Linda brought bags of food, so it was more lasting recognition.
Thank you. Great. Mayor Proton Polika?
Couple things, the Elks here in the United States is celebrating 150 years this year. This Friday, the Elks are celebrating with a party, so I just wanted to acknowledge their 150-year anniversary. And you might recall last month, I had a meet-me event at Dino's for people who wanted to come out and talk to someone and doesn't, you know, either can't make it to a council meeting or doesn't like to speak in public. And it was, it was really great. I met an individual that wanted to become more involved in Ferndale, really liked the special events, and wanted to know how they could volunteer with some of the special events. And another person wanted to talk about taxes, property taxes and the tax rates, and the inequality of how we tax properties here in this, in Michigan compared to some other states, so that was a very interesting conversation. And so it was so successful that I'm going to have another one this month. So on Saturday, February 24th, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., I'll be at House by You. I'd like, I'm kind of shaking up the times in the day so that it opens up for people who might work in the evening, or might work during the week and not on the weekend. So if you'd like to talk to me, please come down to House, February 24th, between 3:00 and 4:00, I'll be there, probably sitting at the bar, having a cocktail or soda, probably a soda. And last but certainly not least...
Are you buying?
Maybe, depends on the conversation. Last but certainly not least, I want to thank the DPW department, but I also want to thank everybody within, within the city, the police department, I know that they were out ticketing vehicles, because as I was making a phone call to the police about a car that was parked next to my, my house, the police car pulled right up. And then as I was sending a text actually to Lloyd, thanking him for the great work that they were doing, a plow truck came down the street, so, but yeah, it was, it was very well...
Could you thank your bank for me?
Yeah, seriously. So I just want to thank everybody, and it's really hard, when you work with a number of people and a number of departments, it's not always easy to coordinate everything, and sometimes some communications get confused, or someone believes something that, you know, isn't quite what another department believes. So I have a question. When does a emergency, when is the emergency lifted, or for, for a person? So if I want to park my car back on the street, do I park it right after the streets were plowed, or do I have to wait for a certain time before I can pull my car back into a street?
It can, both ways. We can either declare the emergency over, but if we plowed the street curb to curb, then for that particular street, it would be over.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I guess it's still kind of confusing, because, well, because like on my street, there were a couple of cars that were parked, so not, the whole street wasn't completely plowed. So people started pulling their cars back in, which then made it hard for DPW to plow the areas that weren't plowed the first time because of cars, I made sense on that. So I guess it's, it is a little confusing, is, you know, when people are allowed to, because there were a number of people that pulled their vehicles back on, and I think they got tickets, because even though it was plowed...
The two guiding principles would be if the street is completely plowed, curb to curb, or whether we call it off.
Okay, so it has to be completely plowed, curb to curb, okay, thank you.
And curb to curb is both sides of the street.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
About the two corners.
All things considered, if you can wait until it's lifted is the best possible solution.
Absolutely.
But again, we have a lot of people who don't have a place to park, so it can be difficult.
Well, and there were a number of people that were talking about, you know, well, why did, why was it called on Saturday? And I was trying to explain to them, you know, that Friday was spent doing the primary, the secondary roads, making sure that the parking lots were done, so that those people who couldn't park on streets could move their cars to parking lots. A lot of people, once they understood why, you know, it was like, oh, well, that makes sense. But sometimes people aren't sure where to get the communication. You know, you did a great job, Cara, of communicating it, but not everybody does use social media, and not everybody's, you know, sure where to look, so.
And it was a constant snowfall, so.
And it was, it was.
It was constant, yeah.
Three days. So that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Piana?
I just have one commentary tonight. Last week, there was a very disappointing regional announcement by our Oakland County executive, exclaiming pretty adamant opposition to moving forward with supporting a regional transit millage, and the effort was trying to get the, you know, another millage on the 2018 ballot. While there's still hopes and dreams of maybe that would happen, I personally don't think there's enough time to get that done. But I'm more concerned that our county executive seems to omit that there's actually cities in the county that are desperate in need of better transit to serve its residents and businesses, so that people can get to their jobs, and that people who maybe can't afford a car can get where they need to go. And so I'm very disappointed that we're at this point yet again, but I do know that I'm working with Mayor Coulter and Helene Zach, our county commissioner, behind the scenes, to do what we can to advocate for a different direction. And that is something that we've done, I've done for eight years on council, and I really thought that advocacy would have been ended over in 2018, but I guess the show must go on. So I just wanted to say, we're still at the table, we're still trying to figure it out, we're still advocating for South Oakland County communities to have better transit options, for creating greater prosperity, not only for our own communities, but for the region and for all the other counties that we be part of the mass transit system. That's it, thank you.
Well, it's a great point. There's nine opt-out communities and 61 cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County, which means 52 cities and villages and townships who want to opt into the smart system and the public transit are being held hostage by these nine communities. It really is egregious and unfair, so we'll just keep fighting. And my one announcement tonight is I want to honor and recognize five businesses or people who are going to be honored and recognized this Thursday evening at the Mayor's Business Council's networking event. The Mayor's Business Council generally meets quarterly, and one of those times is more of a networking and awards ceremony. And we have some outstanding businesses in this community. Now, this, this particular council is for large commercial and industrial businesses, so this isn't about, you know, our great places downtown, generally. But for our large commercial and industrial buildings, companies, we have some amazing entrepreneurs and business owners and companies, and we're going to honor five of them on Thursday evening, and I just wanted the community to know who they are, and, and to encourage you to support these businesses if you can, because they support this community. The project of the year this year is going to Madison Heights Glass. The company of the year is Farmfield Table, one of our newer companies and a very exciting project. The executive of the year, Dan Riley from Axel Brewing and all the amazing things that he's doing in his business. The entrepreneur of the year is Jackie Smith of Coventry Creations, who also owns the Candlework Shop downtown and is the vice chair of our DDA. And then finally, the corporate citizenship award, which has been renamed this year the Jack and Annette Aronson Corporate Citizenship Award. That's just so we don't have to keep giving it to them every year, because otherwise, they always deserve it. So we just named the award after them, and, but very appropriately, our Ashley from Ferndale Electric has been just a really involved and great corporate citizen, his business has been here for many, many years, and Art has been a very active member of our community, and he'll be the Jack and Annette Aronson Corporate Citizen Award winner this year. So congratulations to all of them. I encourage you to support those businesses and all of our local businesses here in Ferndale. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.